All right, I call the meeting to order. And this is a good decision. Too long for me to read, but we need to be able to take this forward and be taken to Texas Court, and they can. Can we make this bigger? Let's see. There. Much better, thank you. I will now call for a motion to approve conducting meetings by electronic means and suspending the rules.
So moved.
Here, motion to a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Do we have any public comment?
We did not have any submitted.
Okay. Board chair comment?
I don't know if you see, Jarvis says he's running a little late.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, I do have a comment this time. A usual comment. But I wanted to alert all of y'all to some thinking that I've been having lately about the chairmanship of the board, the chairship of the board. We normally elect officers in April, so I'm doing this 60 days ahead of that meeting. My personal situation's gotten a lot more complicated in the last couple of years here with case health. But more so than that, I think we all have a use-by date. And it bothers me more than people not being willing to look on the back of the bottle and see what their use-by date is. And it's not that hard. You just have to listen to yourself. And so I've been involved with the library now for 25, almost 25 years, since 1997, either as foundation chair or board chair. And I think, so coming up on a quarter of a century, I think that that's about enough. If that's not my use-by date, I don't know what it is. So I would like to announce that I would not stand for reelection to the board chair, chairmanship at the April meeting. I would like to stay on the board, that's at the mayor's discretion, and I would just step down from the chair and let somebody else be chair. It's somebody else's turn. I mean, you can't sit here like an over-setting hen and do this forever and block everybody else from doing things. So anyway, I'm making that announcement. Now, since we don't do this very often, there really is no process. You know, Margaret Ann had it forever before me, and then when it came time to do the search for Kent, I came along and said, Margaret Ann, I want to do this search and I need to be chair in order to do it, and she said, that's fine, take it. And so that's all, that's what happened. It's not a very democratic process. So we kind of have to, kind of need to make this up this time. I don't have, there are only six of y'all, so surely to gosh, we don't have to have some big process to do it. I would suggest each of you just think about it, and if you're interested in doing it, you might talk to Kent, or I'm happy to talk to anybody about it. But I have no doubt that among the six of you right-thinking, generous-minded, service-minded people, that you'll figure this out. And we've got two months to do it, and so just think about it and talk to me or talk to Kent if you would like to do it, you can signal that to one of us. If you don't want to do it, you can signal that. I would say, the one reason I feel my use-by date has passed is that I don't feel like I'm as good a sounding board to Kent as I once was, and I certainly don't have the connections at City Hall that I once did. And I think you need some time to be that sounding board to Kent, which means that you need to be more in tune with everything that's going on at the library than I am right now. And also, I think you need to have, you need to figure out what's going on at the mayor's office. So anyway, that's it, I've talked longer than I meant to. So that's my comments, we can move on. I will, the minutes have been presented to you. Do we have any additional corrections to the minutes? One?
Motion to approve.
Robert, thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
From Joyce. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, I'll turn it over to Kent.
Okay. Well, thank you all for being here. Let's see. I promised you a bunch of stuff, so I have a list to walk through this time. Actually, today is the day that our operating budget is due at Metro. And we have had a number of different pieces to work through this particular time. First, I'd like to thank the admin team for their work on budget improvements, and many of you here may not be aware that Susan and Angela take the brunt of this work in trying to figure out the real dollars and cents in a lot of different ways. So before I get into this much more, I want to make sure we give credit where credit is due each year. There due today, a couple of things that were different this year is that we were filling out forms in the background talking about outcomes and outputs and strategic directions of where we were going with the budget. And while this has been part of the conversation previously, it's never been such a formal process. And actually, Bernadette ended up assisting me with a lot of the kind of background strategic information that we were getting into the mayor's office, and that information was due last week. In addition to being able to submit a basic budget and budget improvements, we were also asked to present a budget that would be a 2% reduction. And as we've talked about previously, the only way we get to a reduction is to do it through the personnel budget. And what we did this year was to ask the different assistant directors for positions that they would be willing to leave open if we ended up in this situation, which I hope we do not. And so we've identified staff positions which would not be filled in addition to a small amount of the materials budget for Linnellus Libraries. And this is, again, similar to what we've done in the past and where we need to go with this, but we're hoping that this doesn't happen. I mentioned the budget improvements, and the budget improvements are areas where we'd like to get additional money added to our baseline budget for specific things. And we actually had nine submitted by the assistant directors this year, and I went through and prioritized those based upon our strategic planning and where I saw the greatest need. And I thought I would run through those with you very quickly. The first item was to restore positions lost during conversion from EBS to R12. And what that means is that we had six positions that were lost strictly because of a clerical problem when we went from one software platform to another in finance, and we've never been made whole on those six positions, and we are requesting that those positions be restored. And that's about $216,000. The second priority was curbside service staff. I think we're all in agreement that curbside is going to continue to be a service that people want to see after we reopen, and we're requesting 10 staff at $321,000 in order to be continuing curbside service at Bellevue, Bordeaux, Edmondson Pike, Green Hills. And all of that, as you know, curbside is very much staff-driven, and that is why that number is so high. Our third priority was production services, NPL Universe, staff and equipment, and that is for one additional person to work in production services in addition to a computer and a server being added. And as you know, the programming that's being developed is doing pretty incredible things, but the production and training for the creation of that comes through production services, currently. And so we've asked for an additional staff member there in addition to a few other items. We're also, in the children's area, asking to upgrade a children's librarian position that can handle coordination of summer reading challenge. You may or may not know that we have passed that around the system in the branches at Main, and one of the challenges of this position is that it is very time-consuming to coordinate that important program. And so we're requesting that we upgrade and open children's position so that they can coordinate this, and the cost of that is $4,600. We're also asking for an equal access program specialist, our fifth priority, and that would be to move a grant-funded position to metro budgeted position in our equal access area. We're also asking for a special collections librarian, one who work on digital, and also a library associate, and this is strictly to focus on the digitization of special collections, and those special collections and some in the archives. And those are two positions at $79,000. The next one would be branch services, two children's librarians and one part-time instructor, and some teaching materials for almost $100,000. Those are three positions. And then, I'm bouncing around my spreadsheet here, the Nashville After Zone Alliance to restructure the contract and shift some of the contract-funded positions over to library positions, and that would be four positions for $274,000. And then we went ahead and put in collection development funding of books and materials through the general fund. We put $4 million there, and that is our continuing quest to have the books and materials funding move from 4% over to the operating fund. And then the last request we had was to restore library travel and training funds at $7,000. And one of the things you may remember is that we also have staff development funding in our foundation funds, and this would be to supplement that. At one point in the metro budget, we were able to see a small amount of funding for training and travel, and over the last couple of years, it just hasn't been. So, are there any questions?
This is Katie, I have one question, Kent. I assume we wouldn't be on the NASA line, I'm assuming we wouldn't be asking to ship if that wasn't contractually allowed?
Right. That's correct.
Will those individuals still be working on NASA, or will they be in a different program?
No, they'll still be working on NASA.
Okay.
Yeah. I should point out, I left one item off, the very last item, which is to restore the community partnership funds, and what we want to do is restore those that were moved to the CARES Act funding, and that's $200,000, and those are the grants that we do through Metro. Are there any other questions on those?
Yeah. I was going to ask, did you, the order in which you mentioned those, is that your prioritization of those items?
Yes.
Okay. And that's in addition, those positions are in addition to the 51 that are on hold right now?
Right, and I was going to talk about that. I'll go ahead and hit that. Yeah, those 50 positions are in our budget right now, and if we were made whole right now, there should not be a budget improvement or an additional request. So, those are not included in the budget improvement.
Katie?
Yeah, thanks, I'd like to just make one more comment, and this is really isn't a question, it's more of a comment for the board, and that is, this mayor's focus for this budget, which I greatly admire, is in education in neighborhoods. And what concerns me is that the library plays a significant role in both of those, you know, categories. And it concerns me that we are not seen as the major player that we are in education in this city and in what happens in the neighborhoods in this city. And I will urge all of us to do what we can to raise that profile of what we're doing so that when you're talking about education and you're talking about neighborhoods, you're also talking about the library.
Katie, I definitely agree with the base in there. And sorry for being late, but one... Well, I agree with that, Katie, and so, and we've been having this conversation for almost as long as I've been on the board, and no matter who the mayor is, it doesn't seem to get through. It doesn't seem that anybody, when they really start talking about education, includes the library in that conversation. And you might say that about neighborhoods too. And, you know, we launched that advocacy campaign before the pandemic, and, you know, went to council and talked to council members and all that, but the fact is, if the mayor's not willing to put it in the budget, it's unlikely to happen. And I don't know how to make the mayor's, I have no doubt that the ma, if John Cooper was sitting here right now, he would be over in Amen corner, just what you just said, Katie. And then other priorities would seep in there in front of us, and we wouldn't get any of that stuff that Kent just mentioned. I don't know, I mean, honestly, that's one of my frustrations about being board chair. I'm just tired of us getting short shrift, and I don't know what to do about it, and obviously, I'm not doing anything about it. Maybe somebody else can. I agree with you, I think everybody agrees with you. So what do we do?
I'm going to talk about advocacy in a minute, after we get through this budget stuff, but I totally agree with you. The other piece is that prioritization, which is very specific, in that we're really staff-focused on several of those items, because we have reached a point where if we are not able to start adding staff, we're going to reduce services, and it's not just rhetoric. The other piece, the reason curbside is so high up there, as I mentioned, it's a very staff-intensive service to deliver, and we are certain that when we come out of this pandemic and we start opening buildings, people are still going to want to see curbside service at some of our locations. And we cannot just whip the magic wand and make it happen unless we have to do that along with what we're doing in our buildings. And Terry Luke and Jenna took some time, Terry especially, thinking about the branches, but really, what does staffing look like in order to deliver curbside, and what do we need? And frankly, we'd like to be able to put a request to do more locations, but cost just doesn't make sense right now.
Kent, you said you were going to address advocacy, I was going to ask that question, but I also want to know, do you have an indication of overall budget for the mayor? Is he going to be increasing?
No. And it felt very confusing to us this year with the requests that we were receiving for information and then putting the 2% reduction formula in there along with budget improvements. I mean, we've seen a little bit of that before, but you really don't get a sense of where you're going one way or the other.
Kent, we talked about this, what levers are there, and maybe I have all the...
Katie, you're breaking up.
Well, maybe I can find it. What have we left undone that the group has talked about doing, and we've not made the time or created the opportunity to communicate? I know we went through last year, that didn't...
Kate, I'm still having trouble with you, you're breaking up on me. If somebody else could help me.
You're breaking up, and I can't understand your question either.
So wait, go on mute, and then maybe it'll help.
How about that, is that better?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, can this group, are there things that we have talked about doing in the past when I wasn't here that we never got to, that we could revisit and try to create pressure in the mayor's office around?
Well, I think the thing that we're doing with the advocacy committee of the foundation is a huge step forward. In a second, I'm going to talk about the Parks and Library Committee and what I did there. But I honestly think that one of the things that this board can continue to do is those individual interactions with council members and/or if they know people that are in the mayor's office, because if you have enough council people that are interested, you can change the budget at the end, it's harder, but you can make that happen. And but the other key piece is just having the connections either in the mayor's office or the finances.
But one problem with that is that when this mayor was a council person, he was not a library supporter and was always questioning the use of our funds and our budgets, and he was always Mr. No when he was a council person, and I don't see that he's changed his stripes.
Kent, I think a key to the advocacy piece with the council people will be the equity piece too. If we can make that strong, and then, well, the word comes to mind, to sell that, you know, advocate for that, is the reason why we need what we need. So as we deliver services and the programming piece, even the NASA piece, I think if we sell that whole equity, put the frame of equity around it, it would make a big difference in talking with the individual council members.
I agree with that, Joyce, and Kay, I want to go back and just, my opinion to the answer to your question is, we actually have, the advocacy committee has a good plan, some of which I think you're well aware of, but, and there's always room for more ideas, I'm not saying it's the perfect plan. But I think what we are lacking, and have been lacking for years, is a sustained, non-stop effort, where there is, you know, we just keep on talking, keep, our message is good, we have everything we need to show what we need to show. We did get a big roadblock when COVID hit, because, you know, we were there in their faces, we were on the desk, then we had to move away, but that doesn't put us any different than any place, anybody else in America. So I think we have the map we need, and we just got to implement everything in that plan and without fail and without giving up. While continuing to look for additional opportunities.
I wonder...
I'm sitting here with a list of at-large council people, and what if we explain one and make them honest, to be sure they know all the things that Kent tells us every time?
I can certainly follow through with you and do that.
Something different to change the momentum.
Also think we need a lead advocate in the council. To find that person.
I would totally agree with you.
Agree with that too, I have a thought of who I think it should be, but I...
Me too! Me too, I know we've been taking, me too. Okay.
I wonder if I can move on through the budget and then hit advocacy and where we are with that? I just had a couple more quick things on the budget. The, we did submit a capital budget for repairs and a 4% budget. We were included for 1.6 million in the capital bond issue that they're finding out about this week for repairs in the system. We were disappointed Richland Park was not included in that, because we were queued up and ready to go on Richland Park. We did request, in addition to our budget improvement for operating, for 4 million for books and materials, we also included 4 million in the 4% for books and materials. So we were covering our bases there. And as I mentioned, the open staff positions, the prison staff positions are another discussion because they are included in this budget that we're in right now, and what we need to have happen is that the freeze needs to go away. I have made a point very directly to the mayor's office that when we are ready to begin reopening buildings, we cannot reopen buildings with this staffing level, it just can't happen, we would be unable to do it. Okay, advocacy. Shaun and the foundation board...
Kent, one second. So I was going to say about the collections part. So you've included the collections part into the capital budget and the 4% budget?
Yes.
And the operations budget?
Yes.
Okay.
I can't imagine they would do both, but we just didn't want to not be pressing both, assuming that they probably will not move it to operating.
But they've never, I mean, even before it went to 4%, it was never in the capital budget, right? I mean...
No, and I'm sorry if I misunderstood you, it's in the 4%, not the capital budget.
Okay, I thought you said it was in...
No, no, it's in the 4%.
Okay.
In regard to advocacy, the foundation has...
One more thing. I'm just, another, collections is another place that worries me, and it's only because of just ad hoc personal experience, but it is really difficult to check out a book from the library or without having to queue up. And maybe that's just the way it is, but, you know, when that happens to me, I just say, well, the heck with it, I'll go to Purnessis or Amazon and get them, I'm not going to mention this. Now, you know, a lot of people don't have that option, but, you know, $3 million is not enough for my own experience.
I appreciate that, I wish we had 6 million.
Well, I'm sort of like Katie's speech before, I guess everybody agrees with that, but nobody has a solution, but I just think, I don't know, to me, it's a problem. I mean, obviously, people are just working through it because our collections, I mean, our checkouts and everything have been great, even in the pandemic, but, you know, it's a frustrating thing.
Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to run away from you there. Are there any other questions on the budget before I get into advocacy? Seemed like there was interest in that, so I was trying to get there maybe a little too fast. But there has been an ad hoc advocacy group that was put together through the foundation to actively engage in supporting the library, and it's made up of a number of ad hoc people from both the foundation and the community to really try and identify how we can take the best approach to advocating for the library, in particular, the budget. And a couple of things have happened. The group came up in conversation with three points that they want to use to advocate, and those three points, the first one is, the library needs a commitment to support the 4%... the 4% fund for books and materials of 4 million per year. Demand for digital books and resources, most expensive items is on the increase. Library cannot meet community needs or strategically develop the collection without consistent funding. That's the first point. The second point was, there are currently 50 library staff vacancies created by the hiring freeze. Library staffing must be stabilized. Now lifting the existing metro hiring freeze, library will be forced to eliminate services and consider branch closures when buildings are able to reopen post-pandemic. And the third point, we only wanted three because we wanted to be focused. Without additional staffing, the library will be challenged to provide limited curbside service and NPL universe programming, as well as reopen for public service in all branches. Continuing these popular services developed during the pandemic, the current staffing level would require closure of branches. So those are the three points that this group came up with. And Sean, I don't know if you want to jump in here and have any other comments about that? Is Sean gone?
All right. No, I'm here. I was just getting off. Yeah, I, as Kent said, we are working on those three points. Katie, Barney is helping us to craft that. We will be sharing that with our, with the foundation audience. In addition, in April, the first week of April is Library Awareness Week, and there's an advocacy day there as well. So we're going to brainstorm how we get this message out. But I'm here, and I appreciate just the board's feedback and conversation around engaging council. So we will continue to kind of think through that. As Katie said, it was so much easier when they were meeting in person, and now we're having to get a little bit more creative. But Joyce, I heard you say you had somebody in mind as well, particularly with council. So maybe, you know, I'd love to work with any of you as we continue to live out and adapt the plan that was created kind of pre-pandemic. But those are the three points we are really going to stick with and refine as we try to get the message out, both to the council as well as just library patrons and constituents.
And kind of the third, third item I wanted to mention under this was that, gosh, was it just last week? Two weeks ago? Last, it was last Monday. We made a presentation to the council committee on Parks and Library, and Councilwoman Ben chairs that committee. And I made a pretty direct point of everything we've discussed here on those three items, indicating we were at the point that if we didn't get some funding, that services were going to suffer. And then Lee, Lily talked about NPL Universe, Terry talked about curbside, and Nick from the studio talked about Studio NPL. And we talked about all those services as we're providing them within the pandemic. But we were pretty direct. And again, just saying, you know, we're kind of reached the point where things have got to change or one way or the other. So I think that was a really good evening for us. And we had a few good questions. And I think we have, we do have some supporters on that committee for sure. Are there any questions about that?
Yeah. Hey, Kent, what, so what did we get from the 4% fund for collections in this fiscal, this fiscal year? Have we gotten over, going to get this fiscal year?
Not necessarily. There's usually an allocation in the, the spring.
How much have we got so far?
Susan, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe we are at 3 million. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Is that what we got this year?
No, last year, I believe we were more around 2 million. And the year before that, it was less because they were beginning to hit the budget problem. So 4 million would be a really good thing compared to where we've been.
Yeah. Okay.
With the, with the three points, I think it's an opportunity to frame it. The three points are good, but the why of it, to me, is missing. I think we have an opportunity to go back and keep saying, we want to be seen as, we have to be seen as a way to help develop the city's educational goals. So that's the why. You know, that's what that's missing, I think. So if we said, these are, we have to have this for, because the library is there to help me to see these educational goals, but the library is also going to develop a capable workforce for the city to keep all of these companies in here too. So it, we, we're going to have to relate the back of education and income for the city. So the three points are good, the why is solid, like, we have to keep the staff safe and keep-
Joyce, I don't disagree with you, but I think that the, the group was trying to get three simple messages. And I think everything you said there is absolutely correct, and we can frame it within that. But the people that we need to be talking to need to make the commitment. And, and I think basically they understand our importance, it's just getting us to the forefront of their minds.
Kent, can you take our, you present your budget? And the people who are on the, that you met with on the 10th, thumbs up or down? Or how, how does that work? Because the mayor's the ultimate approval-
The process is that we've submitted our budget to the mayor's office. They will be meeting with us this next month. They meet with departments and areas that have a budget. They will make a budget recommendation to council at the end of, at the end of April, the mayor's office. And that, and that budget will be to council, and council will work on that budget in May and June.
So the, the audience is the finance staff?
Wait, what did you just say, Kate? What was the question?
The finance office, that they are going to present the first budget, and that's what goes to council?
Right. And now council can tinker with it. It's, you know-
Okay.
It's not getting sung when the mayor presents his budget. That, we have a strong mayor, we have council. It certainly is the most important of it all. But yes, I mean, the mayor's important, and his finance council is very important. But getting through, and usually what you get through in council is, you don't get the whole thing overhauled because that's too big a deal. But you can get some money squeezed in here, you know, that, a little bit of a reshuffling of the, of the debt at times.
I'm just talking about Joyce's messaging. I didn't know if there was different messaging to different groups, you know, to council versus the mayor. Too complicated.
Well, I don't think it is that-
But I would also, I'm sorry, Keith, let me just, real quickly. We, we are absolutely a, there's a phrase for this, and I can't remember exactly what it is, but, but we're a victim of our own success. And it is everybody, we have proven the point. I think everybody on council and the mayor's office knows what a great job this library does, knows that it is one of the best, if not the best, in the country. And when we go and say, this is how we're suffering, and then you look at, you know, a sewage problem, or the schools problem, or something else, they say, well, if anybody can continue to make it work, it's the library. And so there is a point at which we can't, you know, make whole cloth out of nothing. We, we can't have staff who are both outside on the curbs to literally books and inside getting those same books and, you know, doing checkout. So there's some of this where we've got to shake everybody and say, we're proud of what we've done. We're proud that we're the, absolutely the best department in all of metro government, but we can't forever just get a pat on the back saying, attaboy, keep it up.
I, I will also tell you, there was one suggestion from the advocacy group that we, what I call scorched earth, that if, if we do not receive the funding we need, that then limp along the way we have been, that we begin seriously tracking services. And perhaps somebody will pay attention at that point.
Can I ask, I don't know if you can hear me, this is Adriana. So can you do it, like, I don't know how to present this, but could it be like a timeline in saying, look, at this point, if we don't get this, this is going to disappear, this is going to disappear? And very concrete, things that will disappear or will not be done, and saying, look, this is where we are, and this is the timeline? It's not like giving them a, how do you say, when you're giving a, a warning, but it's a little bit of like, this is going to happen, and make them clear view of what you would cut.
Ultimatum, I think is what you're looking for.
Yes, I'm looking for the ultimatum, and being extremely concrete, and this is happening, and we told you so. So if it's happened, it's happened, it's not on our fault, and it's on your fault and your hands, kind of.
Internally, we are working on a branch reopening schedule, and we will know exactly how many staff we need and how many of these locations we can reopen if we go forward. And we have that number, we can certainly share it. But I mean, it is, it is infinite. We, we will be limited by what we can open and what we can have when we reopen based upon our staffing levels. Just as the number of programs that can be produced and put up online are going to be infinite as well. But the branch staff are working on those numbers, so we will know that specifically. And it's, it's kind of the same way too, in regards to some of those individual positions. And the one that was in there from Equal Access, well, we've been limping along with Equal Access, which is what we provide for the disabled services. And we do a lot of things with materials and program and just making our programs accessible. And, you know, at some point, you can't do it. And we're rapidly getting to that point, and the state hasn't raised their, their support funding for that program in decades. So I mean, that's kind of when, that's just picking one thing out, and that's an easy one to say, no, we can't do A, B, or C at this point, so.
If I may, just really quickly, Adriana, I think, I love your idea of making this visual, and I think it wouldn't be too complicated. We'll have to get with Kent and his staff to get the numbers exactly right, but to, to put some of this in a visual.
Thank you.
That's a good comment.
Well, I guess I would say that in, in past mayoral administrations, I do think the most important person to talk to is the mayor. The mayor sets the priorities. The mayor's, the mayor's in charge of policy. Probably the second most important person to talk to is the finance director, because he or she is crunching the numbers. And it is a matter of priorities. Now, I don't really, I don't know how decisions are made within this mayor's office. And, and also, I think we've all been hesitant to push too hard on them because, you know, they've just been, you could not have had a more horrible first two years of tornadoes and pandemics and bombings and, I mean, it's just, it's just been a nightmare. And so who wants to, who wants to be the fly buzzing around saying, what about the library? What about the library? When you've got Second Avenue going up in flames? So, but I, you know, I think that, so I, I don't know, I don't know who the, I mean, in answer to Kate's question, I don't know who the key person is as much as, as, as in the past, and maybe nobody knows, I don't know. But, you know, I, I think, I think if you can't get to the mayor, and you can't get to the finance director, then the best you're going to do is like Katie said, you're going to nibble around the edges of them with some council members. I, I just, you know, I mean, policy gets set at the top, it just does.
I'm sure nobody wants to see their library closed in their district.
Yeah, but they got priorities too. And if the mayor's budget gets to them, and there's no money in there for, for the 51 positions to open, I mean, there is money, but if the mayor doesn't open it, council people, they can put pressure on the mayor too. But at the end of the day, it's the mayor and the finance director that have the first ones. And Jarvis, have you lost weight?
I, I actually got a haircut.
I knew something was different.
And shaved.
Welcome out of the quarantine. That's good.
Yes, I actually had the coronavirus, so.
Did you really?
Yes.
That's what we really said.
Yes. Well, let's, I'll put you to this. I'm, so I did go to the hospital, but my lower back and my legs, I had a lot of inflammation issues, so it was a lot of pain, you know?
Wow, sorry.
But I'm good. And my one-year-old also got it as well.
All right. Well, does anybody else have anything to add?
Well, we'll keep you posted on where we are with the advocacy efforts, and we'll be reaching out to some of you. My next thing, I, I told you I had a lot for you today. Just an update on where we are with COVID and the pandemic and library services. You can see our numbers are steady. People are still making use of curbside. Hopefully, you read the article in the paper about how we've surpassed our e-materials checkouts for the year. Everything is an increase from here on out. The, one of the things we have, have come up against since our buildings were not constructed with drive-through windows for what is normal air weather here. When the weather is like it is the last few days, delivering curbside is very difficult. Temperatures and the ice, so that is one of the things that we've been fighting the last few days. Curbside has been shut down. However, as we look at the, the numbers on the pandemic, and we're seeing infection rates go down, we, we're seeing hospitalizations go down, we're paying attention to what metro has done. I am anticipating in the not-too-distant future, we'll want to identify a date for beginning to open the buildings. And internally, we have a plan where we would strategically reopen buildings slowly rather than everything at one time. And I guess the amount of staffing we have is going to play into where we can get. But we are looking at that, and I will be consulting the, the board as we, as we look at this. So I think it's about time for us to start really getting our buildings back to the public. Okay. The next, the next quick thing is that, as I mentioned, we've, we've been closed with inclement weather. You know, the safety of the public and the staff are the first things that we need, we consider when we're doing that. We are going to need in the future, I think it's become a little bit more complicated to think about how staff function outside of the buildings. We've been doing that through COVID, a lot of work from home and remote work, and how we apply that to inclement weather, and we may be wanting to apply those same programs, that same approach, as opposed to just applying an admin, which is what traditionally has been done. But anyway, just know that we're paying attention to that. And I would say that based upon the weather forecast, there's a good chance that we'll be looking at closures later in the week as well. And then just real quickly on future business items, I would expect the next, you will have MO- And then just real quickly on future business items, I would expect the next, uh, you will have MOUs to approve and the National African Zone Alliance's relationship with the schools, Limitless Libraries with the schools. And we've also been working on a Country Music Hall of Fame, uh, MOU regarding String City and how we administer that. Um, and I will be bringing all those to you and Derek, thank you for your work. So.
Okay, um, so it is, uh, one o'clock almost, um, any, any questions? All right, let me, let me turn the show on and step away for just a minute. But, uh, you take it, if I'm not back, we'll just roll into Susan after you get through.
Um, great, I'll be quick. I was gonna talk about two things, one was advocacy, which you've all had a very thorough conversation about, so we can check that off the list. And then the second was just some conversations that we're starting to have with funders. We're kind of in two different camps. One, we're having conversations with funders who have been longstanding supporters of the library and the foundation, going back to when Maine opened. Um, and we were planning to have a big event last March that brought these people together. Well, that obviously has not happened, so, um, with that in mind, we are actually more just one-on-one, having conversations with Bretison, with John Ingram, with Dollar General Literacy Foundation, just some of those who really supported the library in great ways 20 years ago. And trying to just understand what they see 20 years later as the role the library should play in the community. And that's been, it's been interesting, Katie Varney has been a part of, of that and it's been great to have her eyes and ears in those conversations. A couple of things that we're hearing is just the need, there's recognition of the library doing great things, but how do we take it to scale? So how, what we're doing, how do we even do more of the award-winning great things the library is doing? So that's one piece. Another thing that we're hearing in several of these conversations is, and this also goes back to what you all have identified earlier on in your meeting, was just the library's role in education and how important what the library does is, especially during these times when our education system is really struggling. And the other piece with that, I would just say, we're also looking for some new partners. And Kate has been helpful. We're in conversation with Amazon. And again, when we're talking about taking something to scale, obviously that is one of Amazon's strengths. Um, and so I don't have anything specific to say other than we are kind of trying to listen out in the community about, um, some of our past funders and then as well some potential new funders and what is their interest? And how do we align them with the priorities of the library? So Kent and I are in conversation to just try to figure out, as we are continuing to hear this conversation, kind of what's the next step? And how do we, what, what are the greatest priorities of existing programs? And is now the time for us to even consider taking something that already exists to scale? Or of looking at something new even? So more to come on that.
Thank you, Sean, that was, that was good. Yeah, keep at it. So Susan, what do you got for us?
Here we go. Well, Kent wanted me to give the board an update on the EDI committee. So in order to do that, I have to go back to come forward. So, um, NPL's EDI committee dates back to 2015. And it came about with NPL's first strategic plan update, updated under Kent. The EDI committee struggled to come together and to get a focus. At times, the committee was inward-facing, trying to tackle problems inside the system, but not with a lot of direction. At other times, the committee focused efforts outward, toward the public, public programming, that sort of thing. The committee's goals were a priority for NPL administration, but the administration did not push to move anything forward. The committee was new and it was trying to figure out how to operate and never really got its feet under it, so to speak. So, moving forward, July of 2019, the EDI committee's chairs changed to Megan Godby and Pat Bashir. Additionally, NPL administration made a conscious decision for EDI, for the EDI committee and its focus to become a priority. In September of 19, the 17-member committee met for the first time and began drafting goals. So, however, there was sense of concern about what the committee's focus would be. Would it be internal, would it be external? The committee met six times between September of 2019 and February of 2020. And during this period, it was determined that the focus should be focusing on internal issues and with a focus on racism. If you have ever been a part of Andrea Blackman's Civil Rights in a Civil Society Program, you may have heard her say, if we as a society address racism, all the other isms fall in line. And so my personal belief is the committee was making progress, but then COVID hit. So everything kind of came to a standstill. In May of 2020, Kent asked if I would chair the EDI committee. So beginning in June of 2020, I became the new chair of the EDI committee. This did two things. It showed, one, that staff would know that equity, diversity, and inclusion is a focus and a priority for NPL. And two, it would have an assistant director to help champion the work and push the mission and goals of the EDI committee forward and would have the authority to do so. So with that being said, I told the committee at our first meeting in December of 2020 that I am by no means an expert on this subject or in this field and that I would need all their help. And I've been through CRCS twice. Every time I've been through it, I found something that I either didn't know or understand, which tells me that I have more to learn, always do. I personally believe wholeheartedly in social justice and EDI work from a personal and professional perspective, sorry. So basically, I am all-in for this project. I reviewed all the old meeting notes, I read articles, I viewed videos, I took seminars, anything I could do to try to be more knowledgeable. So from that point forward, we reformulated the committee by adding an NPL board member, which is Jarvis Rand. Thank you, Jarvis. And we reduced the number of the committee members from 17 to 11, including Jarvis. I did this by reviewing who attended the previous six meetings. Anyone who had moved away, no longer with NPL, or only attended one or two meetings, we dropped them. Sometimes more people are just more people. And so with a smaller committee, I felt like it would streamline it and make it manageable. So, the previous committee had started working on two important items. Refocusing the mission statement of the committee to reflect the change in focus to internal. Let me try to share my screen. Can y'all see this?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you make it a little bit, can you make it bigger?
I can try.
Uh, just, just hold down the control key and scroll your mouse, there you go.
Is that good? Okay. So, the original mission statement developed back in 2015 was, you can see it in blue there. "The EDI committee was created in support of NPL's vision, values to provide excellent service to a diverse community. The committee will examine community needs in areas related to equity, diversity, and inclusion. Examples include race, ethnicity, gender, gender identity, age, national origin, status, disability, sexual orientation, education, religion, or economic status. This committee will make recommendations for action as they relate to accessibility, hospitality, awareness, and training throughout the library system and its policies and programs." We felt that was more outward-facing. So a subcommittee met, it was formed to work on reworking the mission statement. And even though we were working from home, um, the subcommittee kept meeting and came up with a draft. So the draft was presented at the December meeting, the first meeting that the new committee met. We tweaked it and we now have a reworked mission statement. So, you can see the reworked mission statement is, excuse me, "The mission of the Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Committee is to equip and support NPL staff as we co-create a responsible and inclusive professional culture. We strive to ensure that all staff, A, feel welcome, supported, and valued, and B, are able and motivated to address equity concerns in their everyday work. We do this by, one, regularly evaluating the NPL culture through staff self-reports of attitudes, knowledge, and skills necessary for creating a responsible and inclusive culture; resourcing staff through educational programming and curated resource banks related to EDI; advising staff on questions and concerns related to internal EDI; celebrating the rich diversity of our NPL community; and regularly evaluating NPL policies and procedures and make recommendations for changes that may be needed to better align with NPL's EDI mission." So obviously, that change is very much inward-focused, or focused. And the committee felt very good about it, so we're moving forward with that. Um, additionally, sorry. So additionally, we, a subcommittee also met to discuss definitions of what EDI means to NPL. Most organizations that do EDI work will tell you, you can't define, if you can't define what the definitions for EDI means for your organization, it's gonna be hard to hit any goals that one might set or that we might set. So the organization has to all be on the same page concerning EDI. So after much back and forth with the committee, the definitions agreed to by the full committee are, "Equity. We define it as finding and dismantling oppressive structures and practices while implementing, sustaining, and promoting policies and behaviors within the Nashville Public Library system that embody equity, equality, fairness, and justice. Our definition for diversity is ensuring that the diverse spectrum of backgrounds, experiences, and identities, including but not limited to race, ethnicity, gender, gender identity, age, national origin, status, disability, sexual orientation, education, religion, or economic status, et cetera, within Nashville Public Library and our communities are reflected, represented, and valued." And our final, the, the definition for inclusion, "The NPL Public Library is dedicated to creating an environment of equal access, belonging, respect, opportunity, and empowerment through its leadership, staff, resources, and programming." So, excuse me. So after reworking the mission statement and choosing the definition for EDI, what it means to NPL, we decided that we needed to draft a climate survey so that we can benchmark where staff think NPL is in reference to EDI. It's still in the draft form, uh, right now and there's, there's a subcommittee working on getting it to its final draft. Final draft will go to the whole committee. As a matter of fact, we're meeting this Friday, the 19th, um, to finalize that survey. Once everybody approves it, um, we will, uh, it'll go out shortly thereafter, hopefully within the next month or so. We're also planning to do a small video so that, and put it in with the email that goes out with the survey to let staff know why it's important for them to fill it out, um, and give them the message that it is a priority and we need their help. So, um, once we get the results back, we're gonna review it, we'll quantitate it, we'll do what's necessary, um, so that we can set goals and an action plan and to achieve the goals based on the information that we gather. One thing that's already been decided, Admin has discussed and agreed to one of EDI's goals, which is, "We will make mandatory a virtual CRCS, which is Civil Rights in a Civil Society Program for all managers, supervisors, and PICS, which are the people in charge or persons in charge." This will be a process, it won't happen all at once, we'll start with the managers. And Andrea Blackman and I will meet soon to make sure that Admin and the CRCS team are speaking the same language, using the same terms, that we're all on the same page. And we're also gonna discuss how CRCS and EDI can help work together to move NPL in the right direction concerning EDI. So, does anybody have any questions?
Great, I feel great about what you're doing. Just one suggestion, I think in line with what most people call it across the country, I would say DEI.
Well, some people call it DEI, some people do call it DEI. We actually talked about that.
Okay.
That when you have DEI, which is diversity, equity, inclusion, diversity is first and foremost. A lot of organizations consider that more numbers-related. We want it to focus on equality or equity. We want it to make that the priority.
And I could personally agree with Susan on that. Please don't underestimate yourself, you're doing an excellent job in leading, um, this particular task here. And I'm really enjoying sitting on, sitting in these meetings and giving some input as well. And I have to say, Joyce, there, just like what Susan said earlier, it's really focusing on not hitting the objective, but making this more of a lifestyle for people to embrace within the community. And the input from people like Andrew and Nina and so many others, Katie and Emily, has been really powerful and they have really been passionate and really tried to get this done and push it out throughout the entire library department. So Kent, thank you so much for inviting me to that. I'm actually learning some things as well.
I appreciate that, Josh.
Susan, you did a great job, sorry, I also agree, this is Adriana. Just have one question, I think it's language is important to mention in your differences, which you don't have there. Because it would be a very important, the other thing is important to note the composition of your board. For us, when you present it, it would be nice what the diversity is within that group that you're doing. And also, the other thing that we work really hard is also, and I don't know if you eventually will go into that, but it's also about the people that work in the library to have retention and reclusion, like, retention and to recruit. What is your composition as well? Because it's always really nice to understand who you're working with and your board, yeah, that's all.
Okay, thank you.
I wonder if, I mean, this is important, this is important work and it's really hard work because you're really, you're really changing peoples. Almost changing their personalities and certainly their attitudes that have been developing all their whole life and our whole society's trying to do that right now. I wonder if you could, um, I wonder if we should put this as a, as an agenda item, maybe not every month, but so that the board is continually hearing what progress you're making. You know, that might, that might be a good, uh, emphasis to cover. And, uh, it would be, I think, one of those things that's important for the board to hear about. And as I say, it's not every month. I think we should hear about it periodically, maybe every other month or something. Continuously involved.
Hey Keith, why don't we do a quarterly?
Hey Keith, why don't we do a quarterly? Because I think you're right, but I don't want to have Susan on the agenda and say, I don't have a report this week because this, this is, this is important work and it's the kind of work that we have to methodically work through and get it right. I don't want to put us in a position where we feel like we always have to put something in front of you to report, but I will definitely commit to quarterly. How does that sound?
That sounds good. Now, I have that same concern. I mean, sometimes if you have to report every month, the report becomes sort of meaningless or nonexistent. And I just want to keep it, I mean, I, I like everybody who's been, have an organization, have struggled with this, and it is so easy to get going on it and then say, and then it just kind of drops to the bottom of the list somehow. And it just, we can't let that happen. And so, I think if you keep it front and center before the board, it would, but I like quarterly, so.
Okay. And I think Susan made a, gave you a good history of where we've been and what we've been doing, and I have a lot of faith that she'll pull it, pull it forward. But I think there are two key points here that we're trying to commit to. Susan's chairing the committee, I think is key because we do have that direct link to our administrative group. And I specifically wanted Jarvis, or a board member, to be on this committee because I wanted us to make sure that we were, we were committed and we were continuing to move it forward and the board had a link to what we were trying to make happen. So, Jarvis, again, I thank you for being willing to do this. It's a little bit different than what we've done in some other areas in the past.
I'm enjoying every minute of it.
All right, anything else on that?
I wonder, Keith, I wonder if, I think I've been part of the Civil Rights and the Civil Society Programming, but I'm not a hundred percent sure how that's defined. I wonder if there could be an opportunity for board members to go through it too?
Absolutely. I can tell you, yes.
Okay.
To make that happen.
Well, I'd love to do that. If, I may have done it before, but I'm not a hundred percent sure how it's designed now.
Well, we consider the board part of leadership, so absolutely.
All right, anything else? All right, then, where's the agenda? Jenna, Conference Center Policy. I'll tell you, I think we've got a quorum without me. It would help me some if I could drop off right now and, Rob, who's the vice chair?
Robert is.
I'll take over.
I have a request to Robert. I have to drop off, and I apologize for this, at one thirty or really close to it. If we need to vote, can we try to get our votes before then?
All right, I'll try and make that happen. Let's just move right along if we can.
Okay. I really appreciate y'all letting me get away. Thank you.
This is a little controversial, Robert, so you should be able to move on.
Right. So, first, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Then I'll go quickly. So, even though our conference center isn't open right now for use, we thought this would be a great time to update our website information about the conference center. And we started reviewing our policies and procedures in order to do that and realized it was time to update the conference center policy. There were a few changes, so that's what I'm bringing to you today. The last time you approved the conference center policy was in December of two thousand seventeen. It had a different name at that time, and we are proposing a new name. That's the first thing we would like to change. The title of this policy used to be "The Use of Library Facilities and Meeting Rooms at the Main Library Policy," which is a mouthful and doesn't really say conference center in it, and everybody knows this as conference center. So, we wanted to just shorten the name to conference center policy. And some of the other changes we needed to make was to add the gallery space, what used to be the art gallery space in the conference center. We now rent that out, and we did not have a fee structure for that, so we would like the board to approve that today. And we also want to simplify our fee structure. The old structure was overly complicated, and so I'll walk you quickly through that, those changes. We also added a non-discrimination statement, and those are the major changes. So, Bernie, if you could scroll down a little bit to the policy itself, there we go. So, the first change, as I said, was to the title. Then the second change we proposed.
Don't make it smaller. Make it bigger. Thanks.
So, that first overview is the same as it was in the policy before. The next change was under "Use of Library Facilities." That first bullet point is the non-discrimination statement that we wanted to add. So, it says, "NPL does not discriminate when making its facilities and meeting rooms available for public use. NPL does not discriminate based on race, color, nation, national origin, gender, gender expression, gender identity, sexual orientation, age, religion, creed, or disability, and admission to access to or operations of its programs, services, or activities." So, that's, that's a new addition. The rest of the bullet points are the same. So, I want, yes, go down to the fee or the charger's fees.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Jenna, this is Katie. Does this, I assume with that last bullet you rolled down, but the last bullet under there, we would, under the policy, would we still be saying to Black Lives Matter that they cannot meet everyone, if the meeting is not open to everyone?
I'm sorry, I was having a problem understanding. You were saying that...
Speak up, Katie.
I need to speak up?
Yes, I can't hear you.
Jenna, you probably need to mute.
Oh.
Sorry. Okay. The question is, and I believe we went back and forth on this and were the target of some negative online discussion last year, or I guess the year before, because we weren't really open last year. But does the last bullet allow, well, maybe it isn't the last bullet because that would be a public library sponsored, but does this allow or prevent the use of Black Lives Matter meetings in our space if they do not open up to non-black members?
If they, if they are renting the space, that rental fee allows them to hold the meeting for whomever they want. They can control who comes in, and they can keep the media out if that, if they choose. But if the library is sponsoring it, then it must be open to all members of the public.
Katie, I think the, the thing we ran into before with Black Lives Matter was that was the use of a public meeting space in a branch. And all of our public spaces are open to the public. So, if anybody is holding a group meeting in one of those, and somebody, a member of the public decides they would like to come in and sit in the back of the room and observe the meeting, they're allowed to. And what Jenna's looking at today is more focused on the conference center and the fee structure around that, so.
Got it. Thank you very much. Thanks for that clarification.
Yeah.
Okay, so then, Bernie, if you could, yes, thank you, the fees. So, in the old policy, our fee structure was a page-long table, and we just wanted to simplify it. So, at the top, it says that the library events, foundation events, government events are, there's no rental fee for those. The, and the foundation business members are charged a nonprofit rate. The foundation corporate sponsors get one free use of space per, per year. And then, you can see the chart that shows that what we charge regularly for nonprofit and profit rates for the auditorium, the conference large room, or it's divided into one A, one B, and then the small conference rooms. And then the addition of the gallery space there at a hundred dollars an hour, a hundred fifty dollars an hour for profit.
I need to move this along quickly. Kate has to leave at one thirty, we need to wrap this up.
I just, my question is to add language again. You cannot discriminate based on language, which you don't have there.
Language, we can add that.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes. And then, we changed quickly the food, beverage, cleaning fees. At the old chart, we charged ten dollars for ten to twenty people, twenty dollars for twenty, thirty people, and it went on and on and on, and it was, we just thought it was easier to say, let's charge one dollar per person for cleaning fees.
Jenna, is there any reason to put limits on what kind of food and beverage people bring in?
I'm sorry, could you repeat?
Is there any reason to put limits on what kind of food and beverage people bring in? Have you had a problem ever with, you know, some meeting doing something that was destructive to the space?
Well, we, we do address that in our procedure where we ask that we have nothing that stains the floor, like would stain the marbles, so no red wine a lot of times or things like that. Anything else, pretty much goes. If they do, if they do damage the space, as it says in the final part of this policy, any damage we would charge for.
Good.
And our lawyer helped us in the very last part of the policy, make sure our wording was correct on liability and damages, so.
All right, any further discussion on any of these points?
That's it.
Anybody else have a comment, a question?
I think the price points are reasonable.
All right.
They are. We've compared to other places, they are pretty low compared to other places, so we think it's a good deal.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to accept the changes to the policy as a mentor board.
So move.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Katie, you're a star, we love you.
Thank you, I apologize for having to cut out a little early.
All right. All right, is, where are we in the agenda? New business?
You're done.
Okay, and, well, I've got a question, Kent. What's happening in Donaldson?
Nothing.
Nothing, that's what I thought. I drove by there the other day and was like, what's going on?
So, what we have been told is that, again, everything seems to be riding on the bond status this month, actually this week, and they'll be fighting about, about the sale of bonds and Metro projects. And we expect that if the bond sale goes successfully this week, that we will find out in a few weeks so we can begin moving forward with Donaldson again.
All righty. Anybody have any other questions? Any other new business?
Just thank you all for hanging in here. It's been a good meeting.
All right. Our next scheduled meeting will be March the sixteenth, and we will be informed.
Okay. Thank you all.
Bye, Susan.
Everybody.